Last time about we just we need neighborhoods, we need good neighborhoods. And I've actively I've actively trying to put together developers that I understand are interested in building and the people with the property. So that being said, Glenn.
Can I take that back to one of your comments just then, Dr. Wallace says, you said that y'all making some good headway. Are you talking about any stipulation being put in place as far as?
Absolutely. We're looking at.
I was going to cover that.
Okay.
Have you talked about the main streets?
You talked about the payment.
Should I leave the table? I left two pieces of paper. One I had emailed y'all probably three weeks ago, probably with flooding. This quick survey you can do through the South Carolina Office of Resilience. I left it in some chairs last week when we flooded this for our Facebook page. It's a good way for people to go online to mark on a map where they've seen flooding in their area. And tonight we have Kevin Crick here with Amy Thomas to talk about our flooding that we've had and what we can do to do some things. But there may be some areas that we need. But also by doing this, this gives the state an idea of the issues, not only that we have it statewide. And the more there's issues, there may be more money out there for us to get to do this kind of stuff. So if you have had it passed along to folks that you know and little know about it, again, it takes all of 10 minutes to put the information in. It's very simple. Also, I laid on your desk a plan that I've come up with with American Rescue Money that we've received so far, which we've received after the end of September, which was 1 million five hundred seventy thousand nine hundred forty six dollars and sixty two cents. Between now and April 30th, 2022, we've got to have a plan submitted to the Fed, how we're going to spend this money. I came up with four things. There could be more. It can be changed, but it's time to start talking about these things because April 30th, 2022 will be here before the other. One of the things that I've listed, which I've also listed on the agenda is what's known as premium pay. That is the employee bonus for those that work during the pandemic. And as we all know, I think the pandemic is still going on. What I present to you tonight that's on the agenda will be every employee that's working with the city from March 17th, 2020, which was a Tuesday. It's pretty much when we started shutting things down or not having people come into the office as much through the end of June of this year. I just picked the end of June of this year because it was the end of our budget year. And it can go out as far as you want to, I guess. Estimating the cost would be up to 225,000 of the 1.5 million. Then you have online, two economic development, downtown grants loans, upwards to 150,000. Renovation of the first bank building for the police department, 250,000. Water meter upgrades, 445,946 dollars and sixty two cents. And then match for stormwater grants up to 500,000. That's just what I threw out for you is have an idea of where we need to start.
Can we renovate that building for a quarter, please?
I think downstairs you can. I don't believe it will cost us that much downstairs.
The roof's good.
Roof's good.
How's the?
AC units working fine now. Don't know if we had any issues.
I don't remember the age of that unit. Do we have a plan going forward on what we're going to renovate?
Well, downstairs is something we've got to add some walls to give space for officers to be separate, have their own little space, which the most of this 200 kitchen would be things that we could do upstairs in the building.
Elevators.
Elevators, one, which costs somewhere around 75, 80,000 dollars for the day. And then upstairs, I won't say it's good per se. There are walls.
There are walls. What I think most of us will be talking about, I mean, it's got a lot of lots to do, but it's going to cost maybe.
But are we getting bids or anything?
I haven't done nothing. We haven't done anything yet.
A quarter million dollars, you just think it's going to cost that?
It could cost them.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It could cost them.
Very well could.
But no, we have not got any bids on any of that yet. Like the downstairs, I don't think the cost is going to be that much because I believe we can do petitions more so than walls, get cubicles for officer, and maybe some walls, one or two walls we have to put in to make a lobby area and that kind of thing. But I think 250 would be a start at least at the bottom on the first floor. And then second floor, money that we get next year, we may can use the same kind of money there to do something upstairs. But this is just a not recommendation, but a guide to start and have a discussion. Water meters upgrade. We're trying to get to the point where we're not actually manually reading water meters. We've probably got roughly 3,000, 3,100 meters that we have to read monthly. Above those right now, we probably are manually reading over 2,000 of those. So maybe one third are now able to go by what we call touch read.
Still got to open the door.
No, but what we need to do is meters that we have now, we're changing out some. But the software and cost of apparatus to actually go around touching meters is the biggest cost. But you know, we're looking at 445,000 dollars to do that and hopefully get to the point where you really don't have anybody going out to read it, then call radio read it. You can just come straight into the office and look at it on a daily basis, what everybody can read every day. So that would be another one. Then stormwater, you know, that got in there 500,000 to have us some money set aside for match purposes. There have been, and I think I told you last month, we applied for one grant for about 3 million dollars, which is a hundred percent money, where we don't have to have a match. We don't know anything on that one until February. We applied for one last week. And Kevin, did I wrong? Was that a 20% match review?
25%.
25% match, which was, what was the total of that one? 1.5?
Does that sound about right?
That's correct. Say it, 25% of 1.5, which pretty much kind of eats up what we got there. And then we have some others that we'll do down the road. But wanted to give you some idea of how we could spend that money. You know, here's some things that we cannot do that I talked about before. You cannot use money towards pensions, cannot use money towards debt service, you cannot use money to reduce taxes. Those are the three things that we know you cannot do. So it's kind of money sitting there to do things that we normally wouldn't be able to afford to do. But we need to have some kind of plan submitted by no later than April 30th, 2022.
Any of y'all have any suggestions of other ways we could use it? Well, are we going to talk about the premium pay now?
Yeah, we can.
Oh, you had originally said that you wanted to do $2,000 across the board to the employees. I want to know how you came up with the dollar an hour and how does it equivalent to each individual who's working? Because you're going to have a variance there since like 1500 or 1800.
You are. Depending on, first I talked about you're giving a flat fee or a flat amount across the board. Then I got to thinking about we have people who work 40-hour weeks, we have people who work 42-hour weeks, we have people who work 56-hour weeks. Then we have people who work part-time, it could be five hours a week or 28 hours a week. Giving everybody the same amount of money, to me, wouldn't be easy. So then talking to different people throughout our region, throughout each one is done different. Some have done a flat fee for everybody, some have put a dollar figure per hour that they actually work during a time period. And right now, my time period that I picked, as I said earlier, was March 17th, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, which is 66 or 67 weeks. So if you work, however many hours you work during those 67 weeks, you get a dollar for each hour that you work.
So give me what I'm trying to get you to tell me. I know you've looked at it, full-time department heads versus an hourly worker who works for a quarter.
Get the same thing, a dollar per hour.
But what's it equivalent to? Is a department head getting 1800 dollars and the hourly worker's getting 1,000 dollars?
Depending on how much they work.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, dollar per hour. If you were on vacation, you don't get paid. If you were sick, you don't get paid. If you use sick time, you get the benefit. It's actual hours of work.
Right, I mean, if from a percentage standpoint, it actually, the hourly wage earner is going to get a higher percent. I mean, they're going to get more money relative to their, I mean, if you've got someone making 10 bucks an hour, they're making, and I'm just using that as a number, they're making, what, 22,000 dollars a year? Well, they're going to get a 2,000 dollar, you know, 2200 dollar check. Well, the other people might get a 2200 dollar check also if they're making 60,000.
Right, that's what, that's what.
So what I'm saying is, is the guy, he's getting a 10%, you know, increase in his pay, where the other guy's getting, you know, maybe a 3%.
I'm trying to figure out where Johnny's going. The department head, how many, how many hours a week do they average work? I reckon about their own.
Well, I think it's like 2,040 hours per year, correct?
40, 40-hour work week is 28.
28.
28 for 40 hours a week for 52 weeks.
That is correct.
Police department is 42 hours a week, theirs is 2198 or something like that. And fire department, 56 hours, theirs is whatever that is, 930 times, which would be us, I think, like 3,000 hours a year.
Well, how would you get money to the volunteers, fire departments?
Based that, also the number of calls they had for two hours of call during that time.
But I think personally, that's a disservice to the first responders and the fire departments because during the pandemic, we needed them more than anything. And, you know, I understand what you're doing, but I would, I would like to go back to the original proposal that you had. And, you know, if it's 2,000 dollars and, you know, everybody across the board gets the same, because I know you're going to have a little bit of fluctuation.
Cool, cool. And what about part-time thing?
Well, you know, we talked about that too. What was your original proposal for that?
I think you said 70.
70. Everything we need to say with that.
I had no, I'm going with 750, what?
750.
Just a flat. The thing with that though is you've got some people that work four hours a week part-time, you've got some people who work as high as 38 hours a week.
And well, that's not, that's not our control. You know, basically, I'm looking at the full time.
But I also have people who have been here 66 weeks versus somebody that's been here 28 weeks. Should, person 28 weeks get the same thing as person that's 66?
No, they get 28 weeks worth.
Whatever the appropriation of it is.
Yeah, yeah. You don't pay them for the 60.
I mean, I just think.
They weren't here. Yeah, I mean, I agree. And that was the reason I did a dollar per hour.
I just don't see how you can, you can pay, give a bonus to a department head the same as you can give an hourly person. I really don't. I think an hourly person that gets out there and grinds it out, they deserve some, you know, more than.
But now, taking it from all of it. Most of my department heads do too now.
These people out here are working their tails off and making beans on the dollar.
Well, I'm just giving you a reference that, how y'all want to do it, it doesn't.
Let me just say this.
But what you're going to do is, is if they worked their 4,200 hours, they would have got 2200 dollars. And I was going back and only giving them 2,000.
No, because I was going to go a little further in the conversation, but I mean, I understand y'all don't have any interest. I'm going to let you have your input.
Let me, let me say this about department heads. You got a problem and they're on their way to a football game, and you call with a problem, they respond to that problem. You know, they personally may not be there, but you know, they're, you know, they're constantly on call. They're never off. You ever think about that?
Well, I do, Dr. Wallace, and I'm going to be honest with you, I think we're compensating them real well for the, you know, the position they're in versus a man who's driving the garbage truck making 13, 14 dollars an hour versus a sergeant on your police department that makes 16 dollars an hour. I mean, that's just the way I feel. And I just think they deserve, you know, we got this money. They, they are people, money is, is money that we wouldn't even anticipate.
I understand that.
So that's why, you know, I want to kind of look more towards the hourly person, who in the volunteers and everybody, all, you know.
But now, if based on, if I remember, I didn't bring it with me, based on my last discussion about it, that we're going now from estimated 225,000 to 180,000.
I mean, I see you 225, I just, if you could give me more information on how you get that and break it down.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Now we're going to 180,000.
That would be based on 2,000 per quarter.
And. I don't want to take anything away, you know, anybody, but I want, I mean, I can't give you a hug either or if I can't see the breakdown of how you get. I understand the hours and the dollar extra on the hour versus, you know, each individual what they get. But if you do it flat across the board, you do 2,000 for department heads, you do 2500 for the hourly people, then it's cut and dry.
But my thing is, I see what you're talking about, some of these, you're not going to do whatever I do. They decided, you're already out there doing the same work there. That might, that might be about.
And I understand that. I'm just saying, they get compensated really well versus the man who's making the 14, 15, 16 dollars an hour.
I see that too.
You know, that's, that's where I'm going.
You understand. We could, that's on the agenda under every bid, so we can talk about it more later. That's okay. And we'll go ahead and finish what I've got here, but I mean, it's somewhere to start, I agree. Downtown stabilization, as Dr. Wallace brought up earlier, which is also on the economic development side for downtown grants alone. I had met with three to four local banks last week, based on some conversations we had in downtown to meet master plans meeting earlier last week. I met with the three banks here, Thursday, Friday of last week. Proposed to them, would they be open to a partnership with the city? In that if there was money for the city to have, to give out to business owners, property owners who stabilize their buildings, would the banks be under arrest and be a part of that, that procedure? And the procedure would be, the city would have eight hundred dollars to go towards a loan that a property owner would take out with whatever the three banks here in town that he wanted or she wanted to. City would guarantee up to 40% of that loan, that would maximum loan of 75,000 dollars, that we would guarantee 40% and more, 30,000 dollars. Anything over that, the property owner would owe to the bank whatever that loan amount would be. The idea was, what could be done would be under a construction loan. And I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with construction loan. I've never done one, but that was one of the other reasons I met with the banks, is that during the construction loan process, the borrower pays no principal during that time period. They only pay interest on whatever money they used during the construction process.
In any accrued interest.
Yes. Even the first two months, they may have not used any money, so they would owe nothing. The property owner would borrow from the bank, whatever that amount would be, the bank would bet. When it's time to pay, the contractor for the work they've been doing, the bank panels that, they go in and they check off what they should or should not have done to ensure they're paying. Once that is done and the payment to the contractor is complete and the work's been complete, and we just use 75,000 dollars as the loan amount, the city would pay up to 40% of that loan amount, write a check to the bank for 30,000 dollars, property owner would give and owe 45,000 dollars to the bank, however they work that out. The three banks were interested, however, there can be some times where the attorneys would have to sit down to draw up some paperwork. The only caveat is, if during that time period, they start paying the loan back, the property owner, and defaults, the bank gets the building, the city will not get the building.
Again, but there wasn't an opportunity for Jordan.
Would be an opportunity for us, but it would be the opportunity of the bank, as the bank said, well, at least you would have a building that the bank owns that is up to snuff.
Right.
And maybe you turn around and sell. You would have a cheap rate. Because at that point, if they borrowed 75, we paid 30, they owed 45, or they would sell it for what was owed to them, basically.
I would, you know, if that's the scenario, I would say that we might want to reduce the percentage of the line. Because, you know, our, our end game is not done buildings, but our end game is, is to make sure that people are in those buildings. And that was another thing that we'd have to pay, you know, an amount, you know, to cover the interest anyway, or a payment, we haven't figured out that out. But make that payment as long as it was, as long as it was empty. Once it was occupied, they no longer pay their assigned dollars in that, in that.
Yeah, it'd be similar to that, but in this case, covering the banks.
It's a loan that turns into a grant if you can put someone in that spot.
Yep. Again, it's, it's just a conversation to see if that one, they would be in rest.
How many could the city do? I mean, if it's up to 30,000.
Well, you know, I put there 150, so that's five.
So five, and I mean, we're going to run out of money then. We're not going to be able to help anymore.
And then you would have another opportunity this time next year. I mean, your money's going to run out 2026 anyway.
Right, so I'm saying, you get two portions of the APR, the LPR, so you, you're saying you're going to do up to five each year, up to 150,000 dollars?
Good.
I mean, again, the number. Ten buildings down there. If you get 10, a nidus of 10 buildings down there that are functional, I think the rest of them will take off.
But do you really think you can do anything with a building for 75,000 dollars? You think you can really, really affect your bills down there? I don't know about how it is.
I don't, I know you can, but it's what we can do. Let me ask you a question. If we, so we retain that equity in the building, after the process done, they follow the law. That's why I thought maybe our exposure should be less.
The bank exposing.
But I agree with Dr. Wallace in that.
Again, I feel, I just threw a number down.
We could always take out a second mortgage on it, so if the bank did foreclose and went to sell out the courthouse staffs if they brought over the amount of their mortgage, we might be entirely.
We might be maintaining equity.
And I know years ago, we did that because through the years, I've come across old mortgages to the city that we had to go, or I think it was the county that did it, and we had to go back and satisfy them because it just never died off a record.
We can do that, I'm going to hire a man.
A little bit more.
If we can maintain our equity in the building.
When you heard that, not one. Yeah, but that's, the way we maintain equity in the building is on the back end, is what you're saying.
Well, it's, it gives us a little bit of chance at it. There's no guarantee because if it goes, you know, if their loan's 50,000, it sells for 45, we're not getting anything. But if their loan's 50 and it sells for 60, at least we get the 10 back.
Yep, yep. So how do you have a multiple building owner downtown? Multiple business, they will give more than us here.
That's, that's between them and the bank. We wouldn't be involved. We're just there to guarantee a portion of that loan, I guess. The bank would vet anybody that runs the loan.
Now, my understanding is, and what he just mentioned, if you've got one owner that owns six buildings as the sole proprietor, now they have the six buildings and he set up a corporation for every building, then if you get it done separately on all six.
Again, that would be.
Because.
How much liability they want to go to somebody that owns that new building.
So that's something they need to think about, is it doesn't, it's not a stock gap because you own six buildings there, sole proprietor.
If, if it is worth, you know, the question was, how are they going to be selected from the city? I said, the city wouldn't select anything. If we would want them, that's where we want the bank in here.
Banks do that.
They do all the bidding. And, you know, you may go in to and get an interest rate, I'm just throwing out a number, 3%. I may go in and it may be 4%. You know, and then we're not telling you which one of the three banks to go to, if all three agree to do this, we're telling you those three banks will talk to you and they're part of this program.
But Johnny, I think with that, I mean, there is a wage on a multiple buildings for one owner.
Yep.
You get an upgrade for multiple buildings.
We all put where there's a.
No one, no one.
He's got to be smart about it.
One or two.
Well, my other thing is, if I make sense to you, it's like flipping a house. You say you go there and you buy the building for 25,000 dollars. You go and you get the loan receipt and you buy it out. The city pays you 30,000. They flip it and they make 100,000 dollars off of it. We won't be in that kind of business. Are we going to put a stipulation on that?
You could, that they have to own it for a certain period of time.
In order for it to be a grant?
And keep it occupied.
And you mentioned five years in the last time.
I mean, you can do that, whatever the, you know, four years, five years. I did come up with this idea, and I kind of stole it from the city of Brumford, Georgia. I found where they were doing some incentives. And if I remember correctly, there were stipulations, you know, that they either had to be occupied or owned for a length of period of time. So no, you, I'm not against anybody making money, but that's not what we're trying to do. But again, all this stipulates again to each bank's attorneys and their boards or whatever to come to an agreement.
Well, how they answer that?
It may be two months, you know, before we can do anything, but I wanted to come back to you guys and say, you know, I talked to them, and that would be First Citizens, First Bank, and Anthony. Wells Fargo didn't respond. And I met with all three of them at one time, so we all were talking off the same page. So if that's something y'all are interested in doing, I'll go back to them and say, hey, Ken, we need to sit down and draw up something, start to domine and cross some keys and go from there.
I think we need to do that.
Then we'll make sure we got our stipulations to get.
Yeah, yeah. And then, then determine how much one is. You know, again, there's stipulations that have been put in there that, you know, if you own four, five, or multiple properties, you only can do one through this program, or you can do up to three or whatever. But, you know, that 150,000 was the starting point. It could be higher, it could be lower. It could be this time, and then when we get money next year, that night. But the key to all of this is we have to have all, whatever money we collect, 3.1 billion dollars, two years from now.
December.
December 2024, we've got to have a home for this one. And then December 2026, we don't have any money left. So we've got some time, but don't.
A big opportunity, just don't want to miss.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I'll go back to, to the banks and talk to them about it some more. And also, the city now owns the property behind the old First Bank building, what we call the safe property, that was closed last week or so ago, had been doing. We talked about three strokes presented on. We talked about three trucks prohibited on Commerce Drive, our, the last month or month before last, I reached out to D O P, I got a letter today stating that they would install three trucks for hidden signs for Commerce Drive. So tomorrow, I'm gonna write another letter about three trucks on Main Street, except they'll buy them that one as well. And we received a payment from Department of Revenue for three thousand seven hundred dollars about a week or two ago for permits for Sunday sales. This money comes in quarterly, these were for two businesses, Mexican Restaurant and High Cotton. Next quarter, we may receive money, we may not, I don't know. But the question is, where do we want to put this money? Are we putting it in the overall general fund, or are we gonna put it in its own account? Or do something else?
Then you have a property of life?
We don't have that anymore.
I think that's all the current. The other thing I'm gonna bring up, maybe for our downtown person we just hired, are we reaching out to these big retailers about the sale on Sunday, or is that, or is that something we should not do?
Well, I don't think that's bad to do, I don't know who you're speaking of, the big retailers.
Walmart is not.
They, they may not be in block convenience stores on.
Walmart.
He would think they would. I know that KJ and Food Lion.
They are.
There may be one or two convenience stores that are doing it, you can go and find to Department of Revenue, there's a one, you can go to the show, you do that something, say, there's ten in the city of buildings. But, you know, again, this, I have no idea how much money we will collect, this may be the only money we collect annually, unless someone else does it. And I think, based off the two that they've mentioned in this money, is for those that sell out all the Sundays on site. I don't believe off-site can get anything, it's on-site where you get some funds back.
So at present, we only have two restaurants that are doing it?
Yes. I, I'm in.
That's all.
Those are, that I know of this one.
And my understanding is there, it is pretty, just working out for it.
And then lastly, I'd like to introduce you to Lisa Moody. Lisa's a downtown coordinator, grant writer, she was hired back in October. We're maybe gonna make our first meeting in October, because she was taking a class in grant writing, but she's been pretty busy. If you take a moment.
Just kind of brief counsel and the public on what you've been doing and what you're trying to accomplish.
Um, I'm a pro-team, um, Mary Walms, I counsel. Let's start on September twenty-first, at four until eight in the morning, and I walked out the front door of my new house, my new home, and walked down to work. And for a solid week, I walked to work, and I walked by Twelfth all the way to the bank. And during that week, I walked to City Hall, and I walked the streets, and I saw what was in front of me. It was Friday evening, and I read an article, um, that Time had done, it was on the front page of the paper. And I woke up that evening, and my heart pounding, and I sat quietly for the weekend and thought about what was in store for me. And I reminded myself that Monday, walking to work after being there for a week, that I had done three things in my life that I was always very proud of. I quit smoking, I birthed and raised a child, and I got a class at C D L in rush driver traffic in a fifty-four foot truck, double clutching, and, and did that. Those three things have always been my prides that I've accomplished. And I thought, if I can do those, I can be a part of the rebirth, the salvation, and the revitalization of our downtown. And I've, I've taken that moment of realization of what we have in store for us and have gone with it. Um, I have worked closely with the Downtown Community Alliance, which I have thoroughly enjoyed. I know a lot of these people from high school and growing up, and, and families in the past, so I feel a little connection with them. Um, they're motivated towards our goal, which is refreshing, um, with the Master Plan Committee. You know, I, I feel very confident after two meetings with them, that we are on the path of truly moving forward with some positive outcomes, you know, around top of a year from now or two years from now, realistically, let's look at this. But I drive through different towns throughout the cities in this area, after being away for thirty years and coming back, and seeing that it's not just us, it's, it's everywhere. And a lot of cities and towns have pulled through with this, with the Main Street approach, which, you know, will be moving forward that strongly. Um, with our master plan that we have, there's a solid plan with that, with the committees that we're involved with. Um, so I've worked closely to build those relationships, it's gonna take time, you know, you can meet someone and, and learn to work with them, but a true relationship takes many months, many years, um, to see how they actually work and play out, so I'm looking forward to that. And I've spent a lot of time with the businesses. My, first part of my life was in retail, um, retail queen, I was a Terminator, I was a lot of things retail. So I, I have a place in my heart for anybody that goes out to do the business, so I spend a lot of time walking the streets, saying hello to Angie, you know, the people at Ritz, um, the this and that store, every single one of them, and not just going and saying hello, but actually having conversations with them. I've handed out two major packets of information for them. One was talking about incentive programs that we offer, um, getting involved in the newsletter that Glenn and I would like to have put out, that the public would receive, our Halloween event, trying to invite them to come into the event, and just trying to get to know them a little bit. The second one, um, was, was an outreach for the shops mall that's going on, um, and these take usually about two days, you hit everybody that's down there, to try to pull in some, um, excitement about what's going on. I've started a coffee and chat, had nine people show up. Um, we're starting to chat and chew at night next month, uh, it's for the businesses, it's for the owners, it's for the community at large, it's for you if you wanna come, whoever wants to come and just spend an hour or five minutes or a second, breathe in and breathe out. It's just an opportunity for something to happen. Um, we've done a successful Halloween event, um, that was a lot of fun, so thank you if you were there. Um, that is my large background, is special events, you know, thirty thousand people. So to see five hundred or so show up was fabulous. You know, I, I got away from the little froggy game for a minute, and was able to look around and see a lot of children, a lot of families having a good time. I love to stand there and see that happen. Um, so I've been working on special events, I did grant writing program, um, outreach to the, the businesses. In the past, we actually went forward with the property owners themselves, um, with Glenn's guidance, we, we typed up a, a really good letter, I feel, that expressed the concern and the need for revitalization, and we've asked them to return a survey or contact and get a survey sent to them to find out what we can do more for them. Um, it is my goal in the next couple of weeks to call, attack them personally on the phone and see if we can meet to talk about their ideas and things that we can offer, actually offer them, uh, to help with our process. Um, I'm starting grant writing, um, for hopefully working with the police department to, to have some money and funds for that. And Main Street program, I, I feel very confident that, after speaking with Florence for some time, that the Main Street approach can work, um, if it's managed and delegated properly. Um, and, you know, we'll start out small, and, and we'll build on that, and like I said, with the master plan and the committees we've got, I foresee in the next five years, being able to walk down the street with my grandchild whenever we get one, and be able to be proud of what we've done in revitalizing our downtown. So that's, that's my goal. But thanks for everything, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Do you have any expertise in commercial grant hiring?
I do not.
So you think we could be looking down the road, maybe to save the hundred and fifty thousand, APR, ARP, looking at, you know, finding grants to renovate these buildings downtown?
Well, not, not on our, not on our behalf, because we're putting on. Um, and then to grants, I bet I was looking at one here two weeks ago for the police department again, there's certain times where some of them are possible. So there's one that I looked at, that we missed a deadline back in October, so we're, we're a rough year out before we comply for that. So some of them are time sensitive. Thank you, man.
Like Glenn, I think I mentioned before, but eminent domain, especially with building across the Kings, the Old White, across the Council Asian, you can maybe the round property. And we'll maybe look at that and see where our options are with those two properties. Because I'm, I'm really afraid the white building could collapse on the sidewalk, kind of looks like it's going further out.
Yeah, it would be.
We're really speaking about one across from Council Asian.
Is there any chance those two property owners could take advantage of any of the funds to revitalize it or help like this?
The buildings are completely gone.
The one, the one that's on Main Street that's speaking about is called Council Asian in Madison State. The last time Dee and I spoke with, with the family, they were still trying to get the proof of it. So.
Well, that might get hard to condemn, but it can be done, you just have to have John Davies and Morgan Adams lines and.
I don't really think we need to look at that building, that building is about to collapse.
It is.
The roof's already down.
The roof is already down.
And of course, the air rail building is not consistent.
I mean, they, they wouldn't have a problem with the city going in and paying for it and touring that. We, you know, we talked about this before, the cost estimate was about forty thousand.
Yes, sir. But if we, but if we have possession of the eminent domain, we could get funds to remove it, correct?
If we.
Because it's gonna be used for public use.
Anytime you receive anything by eminent domain, the grant chances are slim. Because.
It is gonna take a year or two to get through the process.
I don't think we got a year or two to wait for that building.
Again, we can, we can bite the bullet and, and spend the money if that's something y'all wanna do.
You gotta estimate one time.
Yeah, about forty grand, yeah. You know, and we've done two or three of those in the past, and we never get our money back.
Safety concerns, my friend.
Yeah, sometimes you have to do that, and if that's what y'all wanna go forward, you know, we can, we can do that. We have the eminent domain, not what happened overnight.
I mean, but, I mean, the part that we're most concerned about is the one on the sidewalk, right, right in that area, just push that back into the building, and then we'll figure out what we're gonna do with the rest of it, the last forty thousand. It'll look awful.
Well, we can't.
But it looks awful now.
We, we can't touch it ourselves.
Without rip.
We, well, we have to, well, we've got authorization, but we couldn't do it ourselves, we'd have to hire somebody to do that, because of not being, being a commercial building, we're not certified for asbestos and things of that nature. And we went down that road.
Back and back over.
Yeah. We can't do that, but.
But the property taxes are being paid on both properties.
As far as I know, yeah, yeah. I know, I know the one on Martin Luther King, just because I looked at that one, what, about a month ago, you called me?
But if they were not being paid, we could buy it.
That is correct, had to say.
But you.
But you had to say it.
Yeah, but it wasn't on.
But as far as the city, y'all are watching that, the city properties coming.
We, we try to keep an eye on that. But I mean, if y'all want to, for us to, I will give another quote and bring it back to December, have it on the agenda, how about that?
That's good.
For one on Main Street.
But the long-term process on the one on Hampton Street, I know it's empty lot now.
Mm-hmm.
It could, it could, it could never go anywhere, because we got how much, forty thousand?
Forty thousand is lean on it.
It's a lead.
We'll end up having that probably being our property down the road.
We're right back on, on Martin Luther, there across from, the, uh, Athleti, on that road to St. George, which.
What's the next, is that anymore?
Yeah, right across, right across from, yeah, right, right at the, the Athleti, remember that highway between that, really come see for that?
Talking about that line, the, the.
Yeah, we, I'm assuming we did that many years ago.
Yeah.
We probably did, if not, it was a little. I think several years ago.
So how many properties do we have a lien on?
I can't answer that.
It's a good many.
Well, I mean, more than one, it would be a good many, but I, I don't think, I don't think ten would be the most, I mean, I don't think we have ten. Do you have any of them?
I agree, it's not one, so.
As far as where we've torn it, because most of the residential, we get our money back for that. Um, it's the commercial properties where we own, because people, when we tear it down for thirty thousand dollars, that we get forty.
I wonder how many acres there are in the round property. That property has been cleaned up.
That's three or four different blocks in that, or three or four different partials there.
Now, the dehacked, um, portion of it, the city paid for that?
That's through a grant.
We got a grant, yeah.
But that'll.
But we did get a grant for, to, to help him for his private property, such as our lien there.
They were toxic, I mean, they were.
Toxic, stunt. That's what Greg said, that he got through us, through the city.
We had dump trucks coming from Alabama.
Yeah.
And look at it now.
Well, this is not toxic, that's all that was. Toxic, that fell under Brownfield, Brownfield.
But I think those two properties, those two could really be used for public use.
Well, I'll bring back, I'll bring back next month, they quote our investment on, on tearing down that one on Main Street, and y'all can vote it up for them.
Now, is there any funds we can obtain for the round property, at least, remove the metal, clean it up, even though it retains ownership?
I removed most of that, that one.
So.
You're talking about the structure.
I'm talking about the metal structure, the value in it, with property paper sale.
We could, that I know of, um, we don't own.
I just don't quite understand some, the name of you can help me, and I, this is fall apart, Jamie. We can let it grow up and look like a dump hole, and we got to live with that?
No, we send him, and we get, when we cut it, we send him a bill to cut it, but we have to cut.
Do we, do we get paid?
Yeah.
Well, how much did it cost to cut?
We ain't done nothing cutting this past year, no.
Well, how many acres are there?
Again, how, how many acres?
Four acres.
It's ruining the whole neighborhood.
Martin Luther King is ground out by that property, I hate the J.B. Martin project being done, and then you gotta stay out down the road.
You got them two for that property, and you got to go right out to the, that, that.
Because there's people out there, they will obviously remove all the metal part of it, and the whole structure, we're probably zero. They would not charge a dime because of the metal.
That's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, the one last time I talked to him, he thought it was gonna have election.
Did it say that property tax you do?
That you can't do anything or you trespass on unless he gives us permission to do it. Unless you basically.
I mean, there's gotta be some high-value taxes there.
It's not, it wasn't.
You mean the commercial property?
It was not very high.
Really?
Yeah. I don't remember the exact number, but I think there's three or four partials, and it may have been four thousand dollars total.
How many buildings we got condemned uptown?
What you got, two maybe?
Two uptown.
When you say uptown, you're talking on Main Street?
Well, I mean, uptown, right beside the building today, we got one that's been condemned for years. I mean, we can't put the pressure on them to get the building up, to pop?
I think they've already ruined it.
Yeah, they ruined it.
And it's been, everything in it's been torn out.
Which building?
You're talking about the block, no, the Hankins office, used to be H. R. Block.
I mean, that's in the heart of town, I guess.
Now, the one concerns me is the one with the, with the bats living in.
We have several of those, and I don't mean to stop you, but getting off of the target line.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, um, let's kind of rip it in a little bit. We got, we still got a lot of people to talk.
Well, if you did that, you're, you're.
Right. Yeah. Um, and.
Are you through?
Yes. Okay. Uh, Janet's out, uh, I, you know, looking at the finance, uh, and nothing jumped out at me, uh, that was awful. I think it's good to know that, you know, the, the country club, the golf course. they haven't funded the fifteen thousand dollars this year so far.
But the county also gave a few... Last month, before last, they were probably here to be usual.
So we're in a pretty good place there. And, um, I don't know, y'all have had a chance to look at these as well. It's also noted that we're about twenty thousand dollars ahead on our two percent money for, you know, that's, uh... July, August, September, October, so four months, so that's about five thousand up. That's, that's, that's good.
Where are we with the donation of the golf course?
Uh, the appraisal is done now.
Talked with Brian Mason a week or so ago. It's on Allen Berry's desk, their attorney. I think Janet talked to him last week. And we'll probably have something in our December meeting to sign off on.
He's supposed to be giving all of the documents, the appraisal, um, and various documents to the paper. And I've got to follow up with him. I think I talked to him last Wednesday or Thursday.
Now, on the, Glenn, on the corner. Are we gonna be able to connect to the city at any point on that property?
No, as of right now.
Where we can find that?
No, as of right now. Because the other corner of the big property is not a part of this construction.
You think you could reach out to that property owner where we might get something connected? In that middle, behind the country club?
He doesn't.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
No, not Johnson. I'm talking about the other man. There's another piece of property that's separating us between this property here, the forty behind us, and then there's another person out there that hunts it.
Yeah, I talked to them before. He was willing to sell to us. I can't remember the amount of money that it was in, or in that lot. It was like two hundred feet, three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, he might sell us a small piece of it. And then we'd be connected. I was just hoping we could annex that into the city.
Awesome. I'll reach out to him. I'll have our kind of reach out to him.
Okay.
Uh, stormwater presentation. And Mr. Kevin, you know, Miss Kevin, here, before in your packet, you could have a summary of what he's gonna talk about. And I'll let Kevin go ahead and do the summary.
Very good. Well, thank y'all very much for having me. It's been a little bit of a journey. I think you started here about a year ago. There's some public meetings in this very room. Really, the first step for us was to try to identify as many of these flooding areas as we could. So we did that through the help of Glenn and city staff, and then also the general public. Came up with, I don't know, a lot of various areas that have been flooded throughout the city. Took that information and then also went out and did assessments of the current storm drainage system that you have. Maped that system, and we did, we put that into G.I.S. and then put that into a hydraulic hydrology model. And we were able to calibrate that with some of the storm events that we've had, Hurricane Florence, Hurricane Matthew. And try to make sure that we understood what was happening in the theoretical world was actually happening in the real world. And sure enough, that was the case. So, once we identified where all this flooding is happening, we started changing pipe sizes and doing other things like that. And developed a list of recommendations that would eventually, I'm not gonna say solve the problems, but alleviate a lot of the flooding within the city. So this is, um, over here, can everybody see these okay? And if not, you know, feel free to get up and move around. This one over here, this is the watershed map for the entire city. There are several drainage areas, some of them small, some of them larger. They all go eventually out to either the river or down through Maple Swamp. The largest area, or largest watershed, is what we call watershed E, and it's right there in the middle. And this map here kind of identifies, you know, the areas in there that have specific projects as well. We took, I think we had, and you'll have a list in your packet there, I think it's thirty-three different projects that we've identified that would help alleviate some of this stormwater. These thirty-three projects, we tried to rank and prioritize based on a set of criteria that is also followed by the Office of Resilience, the South Carolina Office of Resilience. And they use that also to determine how they allocate CDBG mitigation funding. For those that aren't familiar, the federal government through HUD issued a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars to the state to be able to be spread amongst thirteen counties in the coastal part of South Carolina for these types of projects. And so that money will be divided out through grant applications, one of which Glenn mentioned earlier, where we've recommended the top three of these projects be part of that funding. And so we thought the best way to try to take advantage of that funding was to also prioritize and rank these projects in that same manner. So we took into consideration several different factors, some of which were low moderate income score, depending upon where it was in the city, the flood risk reduction, how important or how well the improvement would actually alleviate the flooding. Also took a look at benefit cost ratio. So, you know, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the city is getting the best thing for the buck in doing this stuff. We don't want to alleviate, you know, one person's flooding, you know, for a million dollars. If we're spending a lot of money, we want to make sure it takes care of a lot of things. So at the end of the day...
Just curious, you said that the state's getting a hundred and fifty-seven million?
That's correct.
From thirteen counties?
That's correct. I believe that's...
So why are we going after four billion and not twelve billion?
So, the program will last for six years, I believe it is. They are accepting applications from various municipalities, counties, and other agencies.
They're gonna prioritize.
And then they're prioritizing as well. That money, that hundred and fifty-seven million is divided into several pots of money. One of those pots is for planning studies, one of those is for home buyouts. Basically, houses that are within floodplains that are repetitively lost. So there was a certain amount put aside for that. There was a certain amount of money put aside for matching funds. So if you had a FEMA grant, for example, they would kick in the matching fund at twenty-five percent. That's actually part of what happened on this stormwater master plan that we're working on here, is that they kicked in a twenty-five percent match for you. So all of that said, there's a lot of different, you know, moving parts there. We could definitely put in applications for, you know, much more than that. And I think over time, that'll happen. But they're being selective. You know, they want to make sure everybody gets, you know, a little bit of the pie. So, you know, you could put in for twenty million now, but you're just not gonna be able to.
All I'm saying is, is that, you know, this isn't the end of our asking.
No, no. So they have applications that they're asking for on a yearly basis. That started last year. That's where you receive the matching funds grant. This year, we put in for an actual infrastructure project. And, you know, I feel like there's a, you know, pretty decent chance that you'll get something out of that. And we'll continue to do that for as many years as they offer that opportunity.
Probably thirty years ago, we did so much study. It was, it was twenty million then. I'm a little surprised. Well, that was twenty million, and that was replacing everything.
Yep.
Pretty much.
Starting over.
Yeah, and then, you know, this is not replacing any pipe in town. Just on this piece of paper. This is just areas that we know are problem areas.
Right. Yep. So the top three projects that ended up on here were all in this watershed E. And they're all trunk line projects. And what we mean by that is, starting from the outfall down here in Lucius Road, working your way back up into the center of town, we felt like it was very important that, you know, you addressed that first. Because if that doesn't have enough capacity for the stormwater, anything else you do in any other, you know, area that comes through there, it just doesn't do you any good. So by working through these trunk lines, it allows us the biggest opportunity to improve all of this watershed. It serves, you know, a large part of the city.
But Lucius Road, is that where that bridge was and that creek was just full and keep running down? Well, Lucius Road is a dirt road that's kind of behind Lockman's Scrap Metal, Lockman's Scrap Metal, the landfill area. And that's where we got a pipe that goes under the road. It's kind of, it's really too tight over there. It's just a trico water line that's down below it. So we're only utilizing half the pipe. And that's one key area he's talking about.
Is Lucius Road in the city?
No, no.
It's the county road.
Yes.
So is the county road popping out?
I mean, that's what we're drinking to.
That's where our...
And that's, and that's a big, that's a big issue. Because if you can lower that storm drainage pipe down to a three feet, all of a sudden, your hydraulic drain line coming all the way back up into the city gets pulled back to a three feet. And so what needs to happen is that trico water line needs to be lowered underneath the creek bed. Then you can load your pipes and make them bigger.
Too big pipe, that's the thing.
So that's the number one project on your list. And that's what's been put before, CDBG mitigation, you know, for that grant funding. As well as the two other trunk line projects, the one coming up along Highway three oh one between Washington and Dargan. And then also the line that comes underneath the railroad down in Public Works.
But this will provide us a little bit of that.
Pardon? This was on our last...
Didn't you have that?
No, we don't have that none.
Didn't you give them that?
I got two of them. Did you get one of them?
No, I don't have one.
I got one of them. Thank you.
Ms. Clark?
I'd like to do that one.
I doubt that you... Yeah, you should have that. I'm sorry.
It's folded.
Yours is there.
It's all folded up.
I got two. I got two.
I got two.
So our next steps, we're finalizing a master plan report that will outline all of this information in detail, how we got there. Prioritization going forward, funding opportunities that there may be that would be beneficial for the city. And so that, that report will be coming out soon. And then we will continue to work with the city to pursue grant opportunities to try to fund these projects.
Now, the Lucius Road drainage channel outfall, which one is the main pool to First Avenue? The First Avenue is probably the largest.
That is.
So you're saying if we have more of a gravitational pull against it. Our drains, you're saying, are clear, but it'll pull us more out.
There are several things happening. Number one, the outfall here is a couple of feet higher than it should be. All right, so if you can lower that down, you can let gravity work with you a lot better. Number two, the pipes coming underneath Lucius Road are undersized. So that's, that's creating a bottleneck. And then as you come up through the system, you know, on up to the railroad and under the railroad, a lot of those pipes and bridges are smaller than they need to be as well to handle the water that's coming through there. You know, this system was installed a long, long time ago. And, you know, since then, there's been a lot of development. It just hasn't caught up.
So it almost looks like all your problem is on the Bova side of the railroad track, on the pool.
Well, y'all get our drainage, that's where it goes, in one spot, and this is now we're talking about.
So first in Harrison Street, first in Cleveland Street, where that flow of the storm's right there above Cleveland.
This should have some of the more, this should have some of the more in that list, you know, to detail, you know, putting in new pipes and about that way.
Any pipe that has a project ID, or any project that has an ID called E, it all funnels down through the same chain. And that's, that's everything on this watershed right here on this map.
So your expert opinion, this will put around these outskirts areas will pull that water out of that building.
Well, it won't, it just gives you a more, larger capacity for it to flow downstream.
Now, I've got a question. Like number sixteen here, where it's in a residential community. I know you're doing three this year, so we're looking at four or five years before we get to number seventeen.
Well, that one, that could be one that we may be able to humanize, yeah.
Right. Some of them are smaller budgets, some of them are easier projects to work on that, you know, that Bert's crews can deal with. So, yeah, they're, they're... These are ranked in the order of the prioritization tool that we kind of came up with. That does not mean that's the order that they absolutely have to go with.
But E is number one.
But that, that, this channel here, we believe is absolutely a priority because it affects everything else that's happening in this water.
It probably does affect the town, I would think.
I mean, this drains all the way up to Main Street.
What's the second largest drainage?
The second largest drainage area?
Yeah, if Lucas is there, it is Knott Avenue, or one of our biggest, to Maple Swamp.
The Maple Swamp would be your other area.
So that would be the Knott Avenue line, where that big ditch is and the huts. Straight across behind the armory, beside the armory.
Yes, that, that all goes out in that direction, Maple Swamp. The difference over there is it's less populated and it's less dense.
Because that ditch...
But all the water comes back from Maple Swamp. It just gets there from a different canal.
That ditch used to be a lot bigger.
Right.
When you talk about, and then it goes by, then the seed goes under the river.
You know, we covered it up in like three different roads that were covered.
That project is number six.
But you only have a couple of to cover three of your first three years, correct?
That's what we applied to the first three, for the first grant.
Right.
Or the first three on the list.
But you gotta wait a whole other year for you to apply it, you don't?
That was the first, which we applied back in early October, and then awarded, and then kicked where it is. We applied for another one, was it last week? Number four, we applied for it last week. And then there's...
That's a different, that's a different funding. That's a FEMA hazard mitigation grant. Then there's a third pot of money. It's a FEMA GRIP funding. It's called Building Resilience in Communities. That's a very competitive national grant, so, you know, the opportunity there is a little bit less.
It's a match over there?
It's also twenty-five percent match.
And that would be what we're looking at, what we've applied for and what we plan to apply for the top, the first five.
And then, correct, next year, in the summer, I believe it is, or early fall, CDBG mitigation through the Office of Resilience would open up applications again.
And what you're asking about the west side, some of that will be affected. It will be back. Like down from the shop area and south of First Avenue on that west side, all the times the flooding, this should have that option.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Glenn, I'll leave you to... No, I appreciate it, kid. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Alicia Berry from the Dillon Historic School Foundation.
Good evening. It's very nice to be here. I'm Alicia Berry, and I am representing the Dillon School, Historic School Foundation presents the Events Committee of the Dillon Historic School Foundation. First of all, on behalf of this Events Committee, I would like to express our gratitude to the Dillon City Council for your generous support. We also appreciate the help and advice from Glenn Wagner and his secretary Tina Scott. At your October meeting, Mary Miller spoke to you about the Dillon Historic School Foundation and the plans already in the works to renovate all the buildings on the former J.D. Martin Junior High School campus, an area covering two city blocks. After Mary's introduction, Gerald Berry showed you the before and after architectural clients that will completely restore the nineteen thirty-six auditorium and gymnasium. DHSF's present, future goal is to stage various events in that restored auditorium. In the meantime, an exciting lineup of entertainment will be presented in the Dillon County Theater. In the meantime, an exciting lineup of entertainment will be presented in the Dillon County Theater. There will be five shows, five shows, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two season. If you will, please look inside your folders, on page, on, you will find a magazine named PD Life. In that magazine, on page twenty-two, you will see the announcement of these five shows planned for our community. You will also find a pocket-sized flyer of this ad, which I have on the back. If anybody would like to have a little flyer, I would be glad, more than glad, to share with you so that you could have it at home, in your pocketbook or refrigerator, wherever. But it's, it's the same lineup, but in a smaller size. The first show is the Legacy Motown Review, coming on December tenth, only four weeks away. The Legacy takes you back to the days of the drifters, the coasters, the Jacksons, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire, The Temptations, and so many more legendary, legendary icons. Featuring four talented performers who dance and sing, plus an amazing six-piece horn band, you will be transported back in time to one of the most influential periods in American musical history. Now, tickets are twenty, twenty-five, and thirty dollars and can be reserved now by calling Jerry at the phone number on your flyer, which is eight four three six three two two seven seven four. We will very much appreciate your attending any or all of the season's shows. Remember, tickets for a great show are great Christmas gifts for family and friends. Do you have any questions for me, gentlemen and ladies?
How are your ticket sales for your first event going?
Pretty slim right now, and I'm hoping that people listen. I've been contacting all my friends on Facebook, and I say, please post, go to my page, Alicia Berry, y'all can do that the same, the same thing, please. Go to my page on Facebook, Alicia Berry, and I have the same thing that you have there, the same party that's right, Tina? And Tina has a wonderful display on the front side. So we are advertising the most we can, and I just don't know what else to do except I need y'all's help, I need everybody's help to support it. And the only thing that I haven't done is to go and knock on doors. And just, I mean, I mean, no, but I think that, you know, we have a really wonderful line of events. And any other questions, I, I'll be glad to give you this little, would you like one? Okay, you can rest with those if you don't mind, and then, yes.
Yes, we've advertised in the, we've advertised in the PD Life, Golden Life, we've got this in coverage in the Florence Morning News, and we're ready to discuss with our group tomorrow night on the meeting, radio's blocked with Danny Lockman. So we've got about a month to go, and tickets, people are calling for tickets, but it's all reservations, it's all reservations, you have to pay for the tickets when you get to Dillon County Theater. We'd like to fill the theater, two hundred eighty-eight seats. Tickets may be steeping out, but once we move to the auditorium, receipts over a thousand, ticket prices will come down. We have to try to get as much attendance as we can because it has to offset the cost of these ads, because each one of these ads costs a good amount of money.
It takes three hours.
To get back into what we used to signal with the children after the old auditorium. And when, if they arrive, school and dance, you perform on that stage, there's clubs, bands perform on that stage, and then a boys choir perform on that stage, and then Spanish dancers, all this. Want to get back to live entertainment in Dillon, and that's where we'll be happening right now at the Dillon County Theater, until the auditorium is renovated and opened. And it's going to be a wonderful renovation, I've been talking to the sound, sound technicians kind of the beach. Tell me today that what we'll have in that auditorium will be better than what they have in Murrell Beach, and maybe better than what they have in Charlotte. Put the top quality, uh, sound equipment and lighting equipment in that auditorium.
So with the, with the, with our auditorium and the events and the renovation of downtown with Ms. Moody, I think that we are on the road to have a wonderful.
It'll be beautiful.
Town of Dillon. And thank you so much, and I wish you a glissi, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Citizens Report, anyone wants to speak? Anybody else to know? Uh, all right, old business, do you have the old business? Like new business? Bring the pain for employees, the master rescue plan, um, do we want to vote on this? Do we want to discuss it?
Well, it's a bit time to discuss more. If you want to do something, you can do something, but some of it, you don't have to do anything, but this would be time to discuss more, tell me what you'd like to do or what you do not like to do.
Glenn, um, when we get that, um, that, that's not the S O K bonus, the yearly bonus.
No. They still, they're longevity paid, that's what you're talking about?
Ah, whatever they get going to Christmas time or close to Christmas time or whatever.
Well, we always give what's known as longevity bonus.
Right.
That's how we.
Well, I was just saying that.
Christmas, you know, some Christmas, some years we give them some Christmas, what we call Christmas bonus, some years we don't. But again, that would be left up to council, I don't want to do that again.
That usually is based on, you know, kind of experience we're having in that year. And we've got positive, I think we've got first positive experience so far, even on this year.
But this might be something.
I don't think.
Yeah, well, this might be, might be to be really ahead of Christmas time if we do this. Might not do a Christmas gift or bonus or whatever if we do this, you know, here. I mean, we're looking at giving them maybe twenty-five hundred, you know, twenty-six hundred dollars a piece for this.
Yeah, but I think that's right. They don't, they usually get that bonus. They work through pandem, they should get that, be able to get their regular bonus, plus what, uh, the city should give them every year. I don't think that's right to take a bonus, because you, you was blessed to get twenty-five hundred, uh, or two thousand dollars, you blessed to get that. Then all of a sudden, just because you was that, oh, we're not going to give you this other bonus because you got that. That's, I don't think that's right.
I mean, that's already a buzzer, dude.
Not the bonus.
Bonus, the longevity plan, yeah.
Right. Well, usually it's visited in December, and I think, I would like to, let's put it two different issues, and let's visit, look at our numbers in our December meetings, usually when we decide on whether or not we can afford a bonus or not. I don't think we need the time to tune together myself, but at this time, anyway.
What I presented to you earlier was each employee would get a dollar additional per hour that they worked for that sixty-six or sixty-seven weeks. If you want to change that or do something different, that's left entirely, I just give you something to think about. And, you know, if it's something you do do, I'd like for us to do it as soon as possible. And also, if, if they don't employ with the city, the day that we write the check, they won't give it to you. That'll get me, she pays someone who's still unemployed, there's not with the city in the long.
Any other discussion? Can we not table it and bring it back next week so we have? I, I just think a better understanding of what you know is going to be. As far as you got two twenty-five, let's just make for exactly why I make a motion that we give a twenty-five hundred dollars to the hourly employees and two thousand to department heads. You said that would take you down to a hundred and eighty-five thousand?
Somewhere, somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, that's just based on what I did earlier.
Versus what you're doing at two twenty, two hundred twenty-five now. And that's where I don't have an understanding anymore.
Or making more money because of that time.
But still, you can only get the two thousand four hours.
Well, no, you would get more than that. It's sixty-six, it's sixty-six weeks. Yeah, or, you know, whatever, sixty-six weeks. And then it may be some that's only giving you four weeks, depending on the work. And, and I can do that, I can, but I need to know how you want to do it, I guess. Do you, do you want to do a flat rate or do you want to do an amount per hour?
I think fair is just amount per hour, myself, because when you run into the part-time people, we do have, I know we have at least one person that works thirty-five hours a week. So you're going to give her seven hundred fifty dollars, but you're going to give a guy that works three hours on the weekend, seven hundred fifty dollars. That's why I think that hourly, as far as overall, it's one of.
That and, and those that work the sixty-six or sixty-seven weeks versus those that work twenty weeks.
Right.
You know, depending on when they were hired.
And when I, you saw their vacation versus the one, or sick days, you sick days, they won't, it'll be taken out, they won't get it. So if someone was out sick for six weeks, they won't miss, oh.
If they didn't have hours.
Two hundred forty hours.
But part-time is not what I'm really concerned about. I understand what you're saying. Mine is focused on the hourly versus the, the salary at full-time. And also, don't forget, you know, our volunteer firemen, I think they deserve.
I agree one hundred percent, I mean.
Something flat, that hourly thing is, for them is crazy to me. But I mean, I'm just, most of my opinion.
We could do, I'm just going to throw out a number for, for discussion first. You could do a dollar an hour for, for department head, a dollar twenty-five for non-parties. I mean, just give me something to, to work off of, because I want to bring something back and still having the same discussion. Y'all tell me what you want.
I like your proposal to start off with.
Which was?
The two thousand. And that was across the board for everybody. But then I got to talk to you, and I have told you what I would like to see happen. And now I mentioned it now in, in the meeting here, versus your hourly plan that you got, versus those sixty-six weeks. And then also the volunteer firemen getting a bonus too.
And the part-time is getting seven fifty.
Part-time is getting seven fifty.
Because sometimes when we give, when we give out bonuses, they don't give part-time, does it?
They don't.
They, they do, I give them extra hours on their pay.
I just don't want a person, like he was saying, that works thirty-five, you know, somebody three or four, like, it's not being fair to them.
How many you got like that, doesn't it?
Well, from part-time, most of the part-time around here, you know, I've got some that work thirty hours a week, I've got some that work four hours a week, and I've got some that work twenty-five hours a week.
So maybe I'll look at the average of the part-timers and see what range you are. I mean, how many you gonna have that work a lot of hours?
I agree. I, I was just trying to do it as simple as possible. Dollar, for every hour you work, you got a dollar. To me, that's simple.
And it, it reflects your skin into getting, you're exposed, you're.
I like that the best.
I mean, if that way, nobody can say, well, such and such got this and I got that. Well, they work during sixty-six weeks, you only work twenty weeks. Or you work these hours, they work this hour. I mean, that's, I was just trying to make it as simple as possible.
It seems like you put more money in their pocket.
That's just my recommendation.
With a dollar hour.
And then, and then part-time, you take like, like Burton, and like, uh, Jackson, they down in Oakland, they work whenever, so, then the department head, they're doing the same work. So I feel like, uh, the dollar deal is just get found, the way I think.
I think it's fair, uh, to give the, you know, I mean, the whole idea is, these people have exposed themselves in a pandemic, and they've worked hard, and we've got these funds available to us to pay.
And they showed up to work, they didn't tap out like a lot of employees have tapped out across the nation, and you, I mean, we're in a situation with a lot of industries that they can't find anybody that's come to work, won't come to work. And as soon as they could, they tapped out and went down the board, but didn't come back to work. And I just, I feel fortunate that our city employees have stood by us, didn't, I mean, did we have many and all that used, I mean, I'm sure it picked us as positive, but how many did we use it just that I'm not coming to work because I'm afraid of that? They showed up and worked when it happened.
Any kind of figure that is equitable for the, uh, uh, part-time fire department?
I, I'm in favor of hour per hour, and, and then do something for prior to call.
Well, but you, that's, that's something y'all would have to decide.
Well, if you can.
I don't know if we're going to settle this tonight, but maybe if you come back with that number, is that all right?
I would.
Do that, bring that.
And then, you know, you put some in, put it in, and, you know, just come back with some options for us, maybe next one.
How many options?
Well, um, I just think.
I think everybody's pretty much easy with the dollar amount, right?
What we're going to do is come back with something we can do, maybe a little extra for the first-time responders, let's do the dollar, you come back with something with the firemen, volunteer firemen, two hours per call, and then let's look at if we can come back and give them a little bit extra. But I think we need to go ahead, I think.
Somebody made a motion.
Bert, I'm going to speak to my brother.
I was just going to say, I heard Johnny earlier made the motion about the twenty-five hundred to hourly employees, two thousand to department heads, didn't hear a second, no vote. And now, I think I hear both of you kind of saying the same thing, and I didn't know if anybody wanted to make that as a form of a motion.
I didn't really make a motion, I was going to say, that's what I presented.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just didn't know if y'all wanted to make a motion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we accept the dollar per hour based on the sixty-six weeks, and currently a boy just like Glenn to talk with the fire, volunteer firemen getting two doc, two hours a call, and us looking to see if we can get them a little bit extra by the time we come to the next meeting.
Well, a little discussion of his motion, you made it a dollar a quarter for the hour. I'd like to see us take it a dollar a quarter, Douglas, and leave it a dollar for the department heads, and then we figure out.
A dollar a quarter.
No, I said a dollar.
No, that's what Glenn said.
I gave that as a, as a, as a, you could do that as well if you wanted that stipulation there.
And gentlemen, the only reason I'm saying that, I think Glenn could probably spend an entire month running different features.
True. But we got a motion on the table.
Dollar, yeah.
With a dollar a quarter?
I, I made it a dollar just across the board.
Dollar a quarter.
With coming back doing something for the volunteer firemen.
Right, but we include them now.
But I would bring something back next month for volunteer firemen, if.
They all make you get the dollar, but we need to come back with something extra for them.
So Ms. Harris had it?
All right, we got it, we need a second.
I second.
All those in favor?
I, I suppose. Okay, make sure I understand the motion. Was a dollar per employee per hour?
Based on sixty-six weeks.
Volunteer firemen not a part of this, but we will bring something back.
No, no, they are part of this, and then.
At two hours per call.
Two hours per call. And then we'll look to see.
What they're getting, if we need to do something.
Okay.
All right.
That, that is what I said.
I wrote an action statement.
I've never spent a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars like that in all my life.
And also, Glenn, I'd like for you to bring a breakdown of each employee on what they got towards the bonus line.
What I was going to say is, you know, no matter what the amount of employees get, I know they're going to appreciate it. And what I was going to say is, if you could do it tonight, uh, Christmas is coming, you know, I think that'd be tough for a lot of people, and I think they could really use it now instead of putting it off another. And that's, that's all I would think about. What y'all did, we appreciate it, whatever it might was, what we had.
How many, how many volunteer fire, firemen do we have?
We need to volunteer firemen per the last.
Oh, okay.
It says twenty-two, I kept trying to appreciate it.
Twenty-two. And what we'll do is, look at how many part calls been made during that same period, um, and come back with, with that number. And if it's not.
Can you do a call?
Does.
That, okay, all right.
I know.
All right. So, all right, ordinance number twenty-one dash fifteen, adopt, uh, model business license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act, twenty-twenty, act number one-seventy-six.
This is something that the state, the general assembly passed, uh, several years ago. I think the council said, you know, we may be losing business license fees because the statements have taken over and only charged it's only dollars and then they collect the money. Along with the municipal association, worked hard to make sure that it happened. They've come to this agreement where everybody in the state pretty much charges the same thing. And it takes effect May first of twenty-twenty-two. One of the largest changes in it though, is in our business license ordinance that we have now. Is if there's a, a, an issue with a business license, the business license holder, whether suspended, revoked, or denied, goes to a committee to appeal. And if the committee upholds the suspension, denial, or revocation, then they have the opportunity to come to council. This new, uh, standard business act, um, takes out that committee portion. And if somebody has a denial of a business license or revoked or suspended, they will now come to council at, at a public hearing. There will be doctors, as a classification, I think it's in classification seven. In this new ordinance, you will be in classification four. Your business license decreases, and that's the state that you want to see them doing. There's another classification that may be in four today that will go to seven, your business license is going to increase. Again, it's not a city of Dylan number that we're putting on, everybody in the state is doing the same right now. There will be a portal, and that's got to be a trendy word today, where you can do business license online. And it goes to the state and the state sends it to us.
All right, in the case that we're dealing with right now, is there, can they revoke it? Can they through their appeal process?
I'll have to talk to you about that next. So that's, that's the new standard license, uh, standard business license act that will take effect actually May first, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I said.
All those in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-one dash sixteen, appeal existing provisions within Title VII licensing regulation. Chapter one, business license, section seven-one, sixteen C of the city of Dillon Cove ordinance. This is our, what's that?
This is the ordinance that we have existed now for business license, I think that's where you were going.
Right.
That eliminates the portion, if your business license is suspended, denied, or revoked, you can still continue to hold business until you go through the appeal process. This is the one that we're going to take that out. And so once it passes its second reading, if your business license has been suspended or revoked or denied.
Okay, if business is in the appeal process.
And then if the new one that will take place in May, it won't be in that either side.
Can I get a motion? Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I oppose.
All right, ordinance number twenty-one dash seventeen, annexed, tractland located within the sixteen-hundred block highway three oh one north, uh, tax, tax number. Um, that's.
There's a property here at Reeves Avenue and Highway three oh one down. We done got a portion of it last month, I believe.
Is that going to be done commercial? Is that done?
Residential, it is.
It's residential, where the house is.
You, you got, you got a commercial.
Yeah.
It may as well be commercial.
Yeah.
Uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
I oppose.
All right, councilor report.
Glenn, what we have with the dollar?
I spoke with our attorney last week, he's working on that.
I've been trying to get into the municipal association website where they, I can communicate with other attorneys. And Glenn and Tina both tried to help, but I keep showing up pending, so we're not sure exactly what's going on.
Can I ask you a quick question? Justice. Okay. So you're going.
I know this year you tied into the tree lighting with the Christmas parade.
Yes, how, did you bring that up? Yeah, that was a little.
My question is, we give a lot of money to the chamber, not to charge a fee for this Christmas parade this year. Dillon's got the smallest parade of Latta and Lake. And I asked that y'all get with Johnny Lord, and they don't charge for these floods, three hundred and twenty-five hour flood. Will never draw a good crowd down in our main street.
You're right. Luke Green one hundred percent.
So, give them a lot of money. Give them a lot of money. And I, I think you can get it done, Glenn, you and Miss Moody.
Well, we can do one or two things. We can take it back over our limits. Or if they agree, this is what we asked you to do.
Well, it's coming right down our main street then. And it's going to be a great event, we can give a lot of.
We used to have a parade the last thirty-five.
And even the million dollars type of.
Well, Latta, Latta, Latta would have a real big parade before, um, Mr. Charles was back. He had a, he was big, people would come over there and be in their parade. You go over to North Carolina, um, Slidely, Mariana, Mariana. They got, they have, they have a parade last over hours.
I've been to San.
And they ain't got to, they ain't got to stop, son.
Speaking with Lisa when she was, I asked her to kind of, she had her tree lighting. And she talked about wanting to move the same day, Christmas parade, and then she gave me the time she wanted to do it. I said, Christmas parade, we have an hour before we do that. It won't last long, but, you know, we talked about this before. And, and, you know, I'm not here to defend the chamber one way or the other. She tells me that's their fundraiser and one flows, they rent for people so that the people have to pay the, the flood price, whatever the people charge. But, you know, I don't have a problem, that, I have a problem charging somebody else to have their own stuff.
Yeah, if they provide the floods, they can charge whatever they want to for it. But if, but if Dillon Church of God must put a flood in, it shouldn't cost them nothing.
If they want to make their own.
Unless they need to rent the flood from someone.
Right, agree.
Oh, also, Glenn, I'd like you to really get the ball on the splashback.
I'm working on that as we speak.
And, um, see what you can get for us, okay?
I'm working on that. Hopefully we got something ready to go and we can build one and have it open by the summertime.
That's all I have, I'm going.
Since the road maintenance fee is in jeopardy, of course, in the county, do we get any money from around?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any fee structures with the city that would be in jeopardy under what that judge had ordered?
Well, again, that was, I think, could be anything that, that is a fee. I mean, the, the period, kind of like recreation plan, a beer basket. But at this time, no.
So the reason the, I guess, the road maintenance fee was focused on was because people from out of state use your roads.
Maybe, yeah.
But they don't use our water and sewer.
That would be weird. Or our storm work.
So I guess the main, the main one was mostly Ori County?
Well, I think, I think the lawsuit came out of Gruber County, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, you know they cut off the dredging, the, the cherry road in the fifth year, not stretch it to the tenth. And you know there's got to shine a lot of that, because they base it on road maintenance to the channel. But we do not have any, any of our fee structure based on that.
I mean, again, that, that could be argued in court all day long, but, I mean, I, I've heard no cities who are concerned about that.
That's all I have.
Getting through without, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm, right now, I'm four five. We, I've just hired one to two that we previously hired, and they're one fast pusher. How many companies have we had over, over this time in this six months? Three. No. Three, yes, three. Do you believe one within the east end? No, I think it's three total.
Glenn, where we standing at doing the, uh, the parks? When do we go start doing some repairs to the park? Did we get anything yet on that?
No, we have not. Um, I submitted some money requests through Representative Hayes. That was part of, that is what he told me, that he was trying to get into the state, but, so we get that, that one.
Do we have any, um, other festivals or point home things like we had with town before? We got anything lined up there?
There's, things should be starting back in March.
Chili cook-off.
With the chili cook-off, along with the holiday, doing the special, it'll be here the eighteenth of November out here. And then start back in March, hopefully with the, uh, St. Patrick's Day meetings.
For the downtown developer, do you think that you can look into, since we own the property of Thayville now? Look into having a food truck rodeo or something out in that pro, in that, in that, um, parking lot? I called Glenn, previously asked about that, he was saying that we have a little, um, I mean, others be asking me about it too. But I can see we having something downtown, uh, in that parking lot now similar to a food truck rodeo, because you can line the trucks up in there. They can park down there and it'll bring more people downtown too. And most of the food trucks is going to be, I know it's going to be ordinance. But most of the, that you're going to get, that's already, they're already somewhere in somebody's city doing something. So what we're going to do is advertise about it, but you know they're going to be already lined up legally. So we won't have to worry about them. But we have to, they, they wouldn't have to pay our vendors, I know it probably have to pay a fee to come, but they wouldn't have to buy a business license.
I think once we draft the ordinance, it won't be like a peddler's license, but it'll be some type of fee.
But that'd be included probably in our, if we doing a bit, that'd be included in the.
I did charge the vendors this last time, you put a special event to be there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, will it be added into that cost so it won't be, okay, you got to pay this right here and then you got to turn around and pay venue too?
Because if we did a festival, we wouldn't charge them a business license.
Okay.
We'd be charging them the event license.
Event, okay.
And then, I think being, talking about peddler, that might have been something I should have brought up again. With this new business license ordinance that takes effect in May, twenty-twenty-two, peddler license is going to weigh, am I correct?
It's down to a hundred seventy from five hundred to a hundred seventy.
From five hundred to a hundred seventy dollars. Okay, so that, that means now, that would, a, a food truck really would want to probably come to Dillon now. Because one time they would have to pay five hundred, now it's only, now it'd be a hundred seventy.
And I believe that's effective April of twenty.
May first, twenty-two.
So it's still about a few months, but hitting the balance that March, April time.
Okay, I had, another guy had a, a successful food truck. He said, and I tried to get him to come to Dillon, he said, man, you know, they were five hundred dollars coming in. But, you know, I thought, I think he would have did good, but five hundred, there's a lot of people looks at the price of those, um, business licenses they're running away. So hopefully a hundred seventy won't work for them.
Yes.
All right, that's it.
Dr. Don, say one more thing over there.
Okay.
Oh, Beanie, the restaurant club title, when, when is it coming? Because we talked about it for three or four months, the restaurant.
The Kent Town House?
Kent Town.
Um, I, the last time I talked to Beanie, they, they were still having on my punch list that they had to correct. As far as I know, as of today, they haven't, uh, they're not in compliance. So they don't have Beanie hack approval, so I can't issue them a business license.
In Zaxby. Zaxby today, he had told me, they made their inspection, everything I think was good on their end. Waiting on a vendor or two to do some things in there next week, they got a train stat and be opened up, hopefully, windy prior to, that's it. So two weeks from today is it's going.
All right. All right. Can I get a motion going to executive judge? Make a motion. All those in favor?